We'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Juanita. Is there a second?
Second.
Ed Delsey is... He's not ready?
No.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're going to pause for a second while the technician starts the recording. He's okay?
I am.
Oh, okay. Patience, everybody. Just patience. Yes, it is. Come on in. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to back up just one second now that we're recording to state that we have had the call to the order, the pledge of allegiance. We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, call to the public. Are there any requests to speak to the public?
Yes. Ms. Renee, do you mind stepping on the podium?
Great. Turn on the microphone. You'll see the little red light. Push on it, it'll turn green. Introduce yourself, give your address and your topic you want to discuss.
Okay, I'm Renee Curran. I live in Rio Rico at 1002 Calle Tamaolipas. Can you hear me? Oh. I can hear me.
Thank you.
Okay, do I need to start from the top?
Please.
Okay, I'm Renee Curran and I live in Rio Rico at 1002 Calle Tamaolipas. I was encouraged to attend this meeting as a potential board member by the library staff in Nogales. I'm a storyteller in both libraries. I'm not seeking the office. I was just encouraged to come and see what it's like, that there might be an opening coming up. I'm surprised not to see any of them here. Juan is the one that mentioned it to me. I don't know if he mentioned it to you as well. So that's my sole purpose for being here. I have no questions.
Okay, well, thank you. I think it's wonderful you came.
Uh huh.
I'm glad you are interested in participating in the library board and I'm encouraged with the fact that you can come and will continue to come perhaps because...
I'm just available. Not only am I the storyteller, but I'm a retired teacher and I have a library endorsement on my certificate.
Okay.
That's good for the next 12 years. I just renewed it. And Alberto and Juan both encouraged me to come, so...
Rightfully so.
And Laura Rodriguez as well. Those are my contacts thus far.
Well, good. We look forward to meeting you and seeing you again.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any further requests?
No, just him.
Okay, thank you. Then that will conclude item four, call to the public. And moving forward, item five, discussion items. Santa Cruz, Santa Cruzer Mobile Library presented by Lisette Montoya.
Good morning, everyone. Can everybody hear me?
Good morning, Lisa.
I just have a little brief statement. So my name is Lisette Montoya and I worked for the past four years. I've been working for Alfredo Velazquez at the superintendent's office and I'm just excited to announce the Santa Cruzer Mobile Library from the Santa Cruz County Superintendent's Office and the Public Library. But this is possible through the support of South 32, the Mosa Project that they're actually funding the mobile library because we lost all the ESRA funding. So our office is a little bit limited on funds at the moment. So this collaboration will expand access to educational resources, promote literacy, and serve our community more effectively. We are excited about this positive impact and this partnership that we appreciate the support from both organizations. And just a little brief, this week I did meet with Karina and the library staff. We went over the inventory of the mobile library. The mobile library was broken into, so we are missing books that were stolen and some other items and we had to get a new generator and new extensions and they had to rewire the mobile library. So just so that you're aware. Right now, we only have about 130 books. So it was broken into, so it's just for FYI. And then next week, Karina and Daniza and everybody at the staff is going to train me on how to check out books and how to give out library cards. So that was the delay that's happened with the mobile library. That's why we haven't been able to bring it out to schools and stuff like that, but we're getting on course again. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes, does any board member have any comments or questions?
Thank you for your report. Were there books taken too when it was broken in?
It looks that way.
Books as well?
The library staff just gave me lists and I'm going to go ahead and go through that inventory and the books and I'll probably have an update by Friday.
And do you know when the library will be operational?
After I get the training and then Mariposa, I was talking to Yada yesterday when we had a meeting, they might sponsor me some books and I'm just going to try and see where I can get some extra funding or write another smarty grant to see if South 32 would sponsor some books or just see. Also, I'll make a connection at the, what is it, the festival, the book festival at the U of A. See if I can do any networking there that Saturday when it comes up and see what maybe Pima County has any ideas or anything, but I will reach out to them.
Thank you.
Where was the mobile unit stored that it was broken into and are the police investigating?
It was broken into at the 1904. It was in the parking lot in the back and we were going to have an event. And this was when I wasn't in charge of it. I was actually doing Promoting Healthy Students with another grant. And Juan Miguel, who was one of the art coordinators, was going to take it to an event and then get it painted. And we didn't notice until that morning, but since we didn't have an actual inventory, we didn't know. And then since Brianna, that used to manage the library, she went to go work at District 35, there wasn't any like inventory because we always have it locked up at the yard, but that night it stayed there because I needed to go get a paint job like at 7:00 in the morning.
So it was a single event then?
Yes. Yeah, and then they cut the wiring, so it was kind of shorting out for the Christmas parade, so they had to, the county rewired it like a week and a half ago. So that was, we were troubleshooting and it was throwing sparks out of the outlets and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Who does, if somebody's interested in having the mobile library come out, who do they reach out to?
They would reach out to our office and then they would go ahead and contact me. And then throughout community events, I have been giving out flyers and there's a QR code where they just sign up on a Google sheet. And then I tell them if it's, if I can or if I can't, if I'm booked or anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item two on the agenda, early childhood education in Santa Cruz County by board member Francisco Padilla.
Hi, good morning, everyone. So Daniza asked me to talk a little bit about, we had a meeting recently at the Rio Rico Library last week? I think it was last week. So there's a coalition called the Santa Cruz Birth to Five Partners Coalition. And it's a group of organizations, different state agencies, different partners across the county that work with children, zero to five, and their families. And the group comes together about every quarter to kind of just talk about, you know, what's going on in terms of early childhood services in the county, give updates. A lot of childcare providers come, preschool directors, organizations that provide home visiting services, so anybody really that works with children zero to five. And this last meeting we had, I spoke with Daniza and she was able to let us meet at the Rio Rico Library. The space is fantastic, by the way. The county was very helpful. They provided tables and chairs for the meeting. I think we had about 40 people in attendance. So I was really happy with the attendance. And the primary thing that was discussed at the meeting was just the childcare crisis that's happening, not only in Santa Cruz County, but really across the state and across the county, or across the country, I should say. And we had a lot of childcare providers talk about the challenges that they have in terms of running their small businesses as childcare providers, but we also, they also talked about a lot of the challenges that families have in acquiring childcare. It's very difficult to find licensed childcare providers because there's a shortage and there's a lot of families out there that need it. So it really turns into a workforce issue when people can't find childcare. So that was a lot of what the conversation was about. Mr. Vanderboe was there. We had some leadership from the city of Nogales. Mayor Maldonado was in attendance. We had one of the county supervisors in attendance. So it was very well attended and I think some really good ideas came out of the meeting. But like I said, more than anything, I'm very thankful for Daniza and her staff and the county staff that were able to help us have the meeting there because we're always looking for free spaces to have the meeting and those aren't always easily accessible. So very thankful for them. Is there anything else that you wanted me to touch on?
No, I wanted the board to be informed about the event. We had to work hard persuasively with the county to get them into action to provide, because this is the perfect venue for community meetings right adjacent, immediately adjacent to the Rio Rico Library and I'm glad it worked out.
Yeah, I think part of the reason we had such a high attendance was because of the, how it's easily accessible for people, both from Nogales and Rio Rico and anywhere they're coming from because it's right off the freeway. So yeah, it's a great venue, I think, for those types of meetings.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Pancho.
How was participation broadcast for that event?
So I, as the regional director for First Things First, which is the statewide early childhood agency, I was the one that reached out to all those different folks. I mean, I have a pretty extensive list of not only people that work in early childhood, but obviously, you know, different community leaders and those types of things. So I just, I emailed, I made phone calls. I can be pretty good at harassing people if I need to, so that's what I do.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda, library board bylaws. Now, I believe you've all been given a copy of the bylaws, maybe just this morning. If not, earlier. I'm encouraged you to read them. The bylaws are a fairly simple statement. There's nothing too critical or too detailed. Peruse them at your convenience. When I'm going to, and we've worked on these bylaws regularly. And in fact, in the month of April, we completed them and we signed them. But there were only six people at the meeting, or there were only six board members, perhaps more accurate, the meeting that we signed. And two of those members are no longer on the board, Anna Dawn and Marcelina Verona. So I thought it would be appropriate to bring it back to this board because we're more complete and do a resigning. And we're not going to do it today because I want you to read them and I'm going to propose an amendment, which we will have to approve next month. But the amendment, I will tell you what it is. Here it is. If you look at the bylaws, on section two, Board of, Article two, Board of Trustees, section one, Appointment. And it currently reads, "The name of prospective trustees may be recommended to the city or the county." I'm going to propose an amendment where the word "may" be changed to "shall." In other words, "may" denotes permission and "shall" denotes ability. It's more concrete, it's more firm. It does, in linguistics, I would imagine, says it gives the board just a little bit more authority than "may" means we might, we might not, but "shall" means we definitely will. So I'm going to propose that amendment to the bylaws. If it's approved, then we'll type them up again with that change. So this may take two months, approval of the amendment and the signing in two months. So go through, please, and read the bylaws and we will discuss the proposed amendment and any further changes you might want. If you have any other changes, we will consider that also at the next meeting. So that is why the bylaws are on today's agenda, a resigning and a proposed amendment. Thank you. That concludes my presentation of the library board bylaws. Item four on the agenda is the Rio Rico Library Update. Well, this is on the agenda every month and it's getting to the point that I'm about ready to give up. It is so hard to convince this county to take any action, to approve any concrete steps to amplifying the Rio Rico Library. It's just really discouraging. It's one of those things where I write letters at 1:30 and 2:00 in the morning in the middle of my sleep. It's getting really emotional, so I've got to really bite my tongue. But everybody says they're for it and nobody does a thing about it. So we had this really wonderful event with Pancho's group weeks ago, which demonstrates the importance of that facility. It denotes the importance of having a community meeting room in Rio Rico as we have in Tubac, in the community center, and the county of Sonoyta. There's every reason to move forward and I just can't get, can't get it done. So I'll keep, you know, I'll make a few more attempts, but really I'm getting pretty discouraged. But I don't know if anybody has any other comments. It's something that should be done, but I just can't seem to move the ball. So you can think about that and communicate with me if you have any further ideas. Item five on the agenda, the Sonoyta Library Update, Vice Chairwoman Havel.
Thank you. Yes, we have the same problem with the community room up in Sonoyta. It's a county, belongs to the county. It's right, a door opens into it from the library. It's a really nice room, large, accommodating. There are no tables or chairs, so it's very difficult to hold a meeting. We do have some interest in starting a book discussion group and using that room because there is a really nice meeting room within the library, but it belong, it is managed and used by, will be used by Arizona Works if they get on their feet again. And so it's off limits to the library, which means that community room would be extremely useful for the people in the community, but we still don't have any furniture there. We do have moved around the library itself. There is now a children's section, which was kind of initially planned, but when the library reopened, it didn't have that children's section. It looks really nice. It's separate from the adult section and the books have been moved from that children's section into the middle. You're all welcome to come and visit sometime. It's in the middle now with three rows of books. We hope to get into the storage room and get some more books out. And we do have a couple of tables, a sofa that needs to be repaired and we don't have, we have two chairs for the tables. We could use some more chairs for the tables. The fax machine and printer are still not operational and we have the phone problem in which you can call the library, but our staff, Milla, cannot make calls. Occasionally she can, but it usually doesn't work, the local phone, and that would be CenturyLink. We have to get on their case.
The devil incarnate.
That's right, that's right. So with the children's room, tables, children's books and films, and more children have been coming to the library, which I learned and I'm very happy to hear that. If we can get that population coming back again, which we had before the remodeling of the library. It's very active, so.
Good.
Good news.
Yeah, I asked Daniza about more children's furniture and accessories for that children. She said, "All the librarian has to do is request it." Daniza says, "I have the money to buy it."
Oh, good.
If you would convey that to the librarian, just to be proactive with Daniza.
Yeah, I'll talk to Milla and see what she suggests.
One thing, a slight addendum and comments to Juanita's, we're not lobbying these community rooms on behalf of the libraries per se, either in Rio Rico or Sonoyta. We are lobbying on behalf of the community because they're not really library operations. They're just adjacent to the library and the library is the most convenient vehicle for utilization of the county infrastructure, so.
And they're actually outside of the library parameter.
They are.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right.
Meeting room for the community.
Right.
Absolutely.
So it's important to realize, I'm not lobbying on behalf, I don't go to our supervisor and say, "On behalf of the library." I go on behalf of the community. It's really for the community itself. Thank you. Anything else, Juanita? Any questions, Juanita? All right, item six, term expiration and renomination for Mr. Ed Delsey. Ed's tenure on the board concludes this month, in the month of February, and...
This meeting is the last.
This is the last meeting under your current appointment. I'm going to ask, I'm going to encourage and ask for a nomination to reappoint him to the board. Ed serves, I think at one point you were serving as a city representative.
It was always the county.
Oh, it's always the county?
It was always the county.
Okay, because you live in, you know, Springs outside the city limits. Okay.
Yeah, because I live outside.
Because now we have four other county representatives. Ed is now considered the at-large, which is somewhere between the city and the county. The only detail I don't know, and I'll consult with the Daniza, is who do we make the recommendation to? The city council or the board of supervisors?
It goes to Supervisor Davis or the board of supervisors.
Okay.
Yeah, because I live in District One.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Yeah.
So with that understanding, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Ed Delsey to our library board.
I'll make a motion. I move to reappoint Ed Delsey to the library board of trustees.
Thank you. We have a motion by Pancho. Is there a second?
My second.
Oh, my second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carries. We will pass this nomination on to Daniza and she will pass it on to the county board of supervisors.
Yes, this would be my, finishing my 18th year on the board of supervisors. Since I moved into Santa Cruz County, that was the first action that I took in approaching the library and how it was structured and it was my recommendation.
And you have served as president of the board, too. Right?
Exactly.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Item seven, acquisition and weeding policies. Vice Chairwoman Havel.
Oh, thank you. I had asked for that and I see that we have, we have some documentation here. So basically, this will, I'll be studying this and, or you can elaborate if you would like, on the material selection policy. There is a policy for that. Now, and you have the removal, that's the last one. I was interested basically in the weeding. And you also have a policy for why you weed the books. So I will be studying this. Thank you. And perhaps we can revisit that next month if we have any additions or concerns.
Yeah, I think it would be better to revise it next meeting.
Okay, let's do that. All right, thank you.
So what should we do? Should we read it and suggest revisions or?
Yes, just to understand. I think we need to read that and think about it a little bit. And I appreciate the documentation that you've given us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item eight, Friends Update. Ed Delsey.
Friends continues to carry out its activities in the, what I consider, library kits or neighborhood library units. And the Safeway store is an example as to how active it can really be. I have to replace books in that kit at least three times a week.
Wow.
It's that fast. And others have contributed, other supplies, magazines in particular, for distribution, which has been very good. The other, there's a total of five here in Nogales and the Little Red, the McChacoyle Petite unit also has been very active, many exchanges of books there. Country, people are taking books and replacing books, which is a good idea. That's working out very well. The one at Police Department and at the rec center are not as active. They've been used, but not utilized to the degree that the Safeway unit shows. We've gotten an approach from the Santa Fe Foundation, building a couple of more that Anna has recommended. On the initiative there, we might be putting up some costs to cover the cost to build a new kit. And where they're going to be located, this is really coming across on Anna's recommendation. We have units also in Tubac and in Sonoyta and they're active in that area. How active I don't really know. I haven't checked with Juanita to see how active that particular unit is there. Anna, in her absence because of her medical condition, is still taking the initiative to seek out two more funding resources that we're looking at. And we meet at 11:15 after this meeting and we'll be working on the details of that to see what we want to cover. I was re-elected chair for another year and this will be my fourth year with the Friends. And Juanita is our secretary and Marv Atit is our treasurer. And we have some, a lot of activity coming in from those areas also, so looking forward to Friends' activity within the community.
Thank you.
May I, I'd like to add something. I would be interested in, I'm going to approach the Friends and see if we can find funding to purchase professional magazines for the staff at the library. So I would like to know what magazines you may be interested in, whether, I don't know if you take Library Journal, Hornbook, School Library Journal, but I will be talking about that today at our meeting and that read.
Renee, this might be a point where you could get involved with the library through the Friends group, if that interests you. You can talk to Juanita or Ed after the meeting. You may.
Okay. I have my own library at home. I love books. They just warm up, like stories, art, like mix of life. And so I've heard several things I'm interested in, the mobile library, friends with the library, but I don't know how to get involved. When I looked up library board, it's very hard to find any details or anything. So any tips or leads you can give me, I will likely.
We'll be happy to talk to you after the meeting. Yeah, we'll, we'll be happy to talk to you after the meeting. Wonderful, thank you.
Friends makes the effort to meet after this board meeting and we meet in the library. The Nogales Library, yeah.
I love the Rio Rico Library. It's so small and I know Albert, there's a book club that I remember that has been meeting there. They're not associated with the library. But one of the reasons they're not going to be there anymore is because of the fear of being associated with the library itself. I would be willing, as a friend of the library, to have a library book club, but the administrator of our group, something was said to her, and I don't know what it was. I'm not privy to that, but she said, "I don't mind managing a book club for myself and the community, but I don't want to manage a book club for the library." So if there was a separate community room, that might solve that issue. And I would be willing, as a community member, to do anything I could to push that forward. And I would be willing as a community member to do anything I could to push that forward. Alberto has my number.
Well, we'll look for some solutions to the situation. That's great. Thank you.
I know at one time, there was 10 little ones in that little room for the storytelling. Just enchanted, it's all here. And the parents, there was even one there from Wisconsin, I think, that was there. The father was a bird watcher, and he was in the community to watch birds. And mom had looked up the library schedule and found us in the Rio Rico library. And so they came for a long time visit. And I just happened to have a book club book that I could pass on that had a bird watcher. So it's, I'm in. The only other thing I do that might conflict is I'm a court appointed special advocate for kids within the court system. That's why I was just a little bit late because there was a whole case work that is involved. So I'm available from what.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you.
I'm not pursuing a board position. It was just one mentioning to me, and he's, there would be Nogales assistant job application. And I almost applied for that, but I really don't want to be on the table. I'm retired. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item, oh, go ahead.
I have two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One, how do, what is the name for the, where do you put the books in Mexicalot?
What's the name? It technically doesn't really have a name on it. It's just the picture of the unit itself, and they're like the newspaper units. That's where we originally got the boxes from.
Yeah.
And plus the Santa Fe Foundation helped us in building the one that we use at Safeway. And that's the only one that was built locally. But the, for me, they're little libraries. They're neighborhood little libraries. That's what they actually are. And it has a little message on there. Take a book, leave a book as a message for the kids.
And for the little libraries, can you move the ones who are not very active, like for locating in a different place? Try to find like a new place where it gets more active?
That's, I think that's a possibility.
Karim Park, where a lot of kids wait. When I've seen a lot of kids waiting for their parents in that place after school. So I think maybe you can.
Those could be good suggestions to work with here. Then we're open to suggestions to make the kids more visible and usable at the neighborhood level. That's where the focus is. When Ana started working on that and then worked with us to get it done. We'll do that, yes.
Thank you. And other questions?
If I may, we have a list of all the little free libraries in the county. They're not all sponsored by the Friends, but some, or free little libraries, I think we're calling them. They're not all sponsored by the Friends, but we do have that many in the area. And I, we just, we started this last year. So I think before we move or shut down, we want to kind of get some data and see which ones are working. Apparently, what Ed was saying about replacing two that were not active was they were difficult to open up. They were former newspaper boxes, and they were kind of a problem. So we're going to try to replace those. But if you have any suggestions for where a good place to put one. Perhaps, Ed, we can make that list available for the next meeting, and then people will know where they are.
Yeah, we can work on that.
And also maybe to make it like more active or bigger than to proposed person to adopt a little library. For example, my husband and I, we can, I don't know, try to make one and put, and we respond for those to.
Exchangeable.
Yeah, to exchange books and like be focused, like one person in each little library to make it bigger. I don't know.
I do agree that the Karim Park is a fantastic place to place a little library. There are hundreds of kids waiting to be picked up at that park. I mean, we, our office is right there. We actually started a new project where every Thursday, we have this new grant where we're doing mental health for the community. And one of the things that we're doing, it's called Salud, sorry. And so we have a mental health pop-up every month. And we did one at the park last, this last January at Karim Park. And a lot of kids stopped by, and all we did was play games with them and stuff. And they loved it, and they asked us when we would be back. And honestly, that wasn't our plan. So as of tomorrow, we have our next just little pop-up. We're going to be there every other Thursday, hopefully, because there are a lot of kids. And I think if we placed a little library there, a lot of kids would benefit from that.
I had a comment and a question to comment. The Friends, is it a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Okay. So my comment is, in terms of funding, I know right now there's funding available from South 32 and it goes through the Southern Air Community Foundation?
We have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And Humberto Lopez Foundation. We've hit those two.
Okay. So you're on it. Thank you.
We had two very effective resources suggested by Ana and the board members. And we worked with that and worked it through, and have gotten everything cleared. Thank you, Juanita. We've been able to get the 501(c)(3) status, so that's worked out real well for us. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward, item nine, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2024 and January 15th, 2025. Now, I believe we are only going to approve one. Is that correct, Karina? Okay. Which one are we going to approve? The January meeting, correct?
January.
All right. We were all emailed a recording of the January meetings. I trust everybody took some time to listen to it. And if so, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, January 15th, 2025. The minutes of December 18th, 2024, we will postpone and table until our next meeting. Is there a motion?
Uh huh.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the December, excuse me, the January 15th, 2025 meeting are approved. Item six on our agenda, board reports. Current events in summary must be brief and therefore cannot be any proposal, discussion, deliberation, or legal action taken. I'll just move down the board one by one. Juanita, any further comments you want to make?
Nothing to add.
All right. Pancho?
Nothing.
All right. Santos?
Nothing to add.
Ed? Thank you. All right. Nothing? And, okay. All right. Well, I will just briefly add, as you heard, I did attend the meeting of zero to five. I was there just briefly, kind of at the beginning, to meet and greet and say hello to people. That was a fantastic. The other item I want to mention is not what I've done, but what's going to happen tomorrow. I think you all received an invitation to an author's reception in the University of Arizona tomorrow. The author is Joe Savada, who is a Newberry Prize-winning author for his books and illustrations. Callicott?
Callicott.
He's an illustrator.
Callicott, correct. So this is being promoted and encouraged by our county supervisor, Luis Carlos Davis, from District One. He is acquainted with the university professors. And I don't know if he has a personal acquaintance with Joe Savada or not. But we've received multiple communications from Luis Carlos. So I'm going to attend. It's tomorrow afternoon from like 5:30 to 6:30 maybe. Juanita's going to attend, and I hope any of all of you, if possible, can attend. Is Anita planning on attending? Do you know?
Staff is attending.
Staff is attending?
Yes.
Good. All right.
Do you know how many?
We're going to have a small presence, and that's important.
Do we have a count?
Where is that taking place?
It's at the education building, the fourth floor, the WOW library, Words of Wonder library.
It's not in the world, not on the Second Street address, near the university?
Yeah, that's the education building. It's in the education building.
But is that on Second Street? Because I looked it up.
I think it is, yeah. Or the Mountain View, the parking there. Yeah, it's second, isn't it? Yeah.
That's the education building at the UO.
Yeah, at the University of Arizona.
The World Awards. That's what I looked up. I Googled.
That's it. That's it.
All right. All right. So Juanita has told me that the organizers would like a count so they can prepare how many people will be attending.
So if you know, if you can confirm.
About three staff members will be there?
Three staff members.
Three? Oh, good. Okay.
Juanita and myself is five. Anybody else think they can? Are you going to make it, Ed?
Yeah, I'm going to try.
Okay. Ed would be six.
Okay.
All right.
And I think Luis and Alberto are going too, right? Luis Carlos Davis.
I'm sure he'll be there.
Yeah. Okay. So seven, eight?
Seven, eight. Sounds close. Anybody else, if you can attend or think you can attend, advise Juanita, please.
I can't.
You've got something going on.
I coach two rec basketball teams for my sons, so we have a game.
All right. Understood. Thank you. All right. That concludes the board reports. Item seven, library director's report. I should have probably mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, but Anita's not here because she has a conflict with, she's meeting with an E-rate, which is the electronic rate, which provides funds to library activities. And I guess this was the one and only time they could get that meeting scheduled. So Karina here is in her stead, and we'll give our director's report.
Yeah, so for events and programs, staff, it's doing a lot of Valentine's events during this week. Valentine cupcake, decoration, movies at Tubac, arts and crafts at Sonoyta and Rio Rico. Staff also has been attending to outreach programs, the middle schools and high school resources night. So staff has been attending those. We do now have a date for the Mexican consulate event, which is March 20th. And I want to add the time. It will be from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That will be at the main library on March 20th. So they are donating about 100 books. Also, we are getting ready for National Library Week, which is in April, April 6th to 12th. We want to have as many programs as possible during that week just to have the community come into the library and look at our resources and have fun. And for lastly, I don't know, Mr. Bando, you want to talk more about the walkthrough with the city manager?
Yes, I will. I should have mentioned that in my board report. But we found a meeting time with interim city manager Joel Kramer. And we walked through the Grand Avenue, the city library, with the idea that librarian Anita Lopez could show him the improvements, the renovations, the repairs that the building needs. The building is 60 years old. And with the think, the idea of, as all the city departments began to put their budgets together for the upcoming fiscal year, now is a time to be thinking about what the library needs and included in, to show and teach Mr. Kramer what the library. It wasn't talk about library policy or politics. It was simply to look at the physical building. And that's what we did. She talked about renovating the floor. She talked, we talked a little bit about the broken window. We talked about repairing the cement sidewalk out in front. If you go in there, you'll notice a large crack through it. And there's a, we talked about, also in attendance was a board member, Christian Hernandez, as a contractor, and he had some good suggestions about perhaps making just that a one-long ramp and just taking out the curb out. It would make it more accessible. We talked about furniture and shelves for the branch libraries, including Tubac and Sonoyta and Rio Rico. So it was a physical plant. It was just the building, the bricks and mortar aspect of walking through it. So I thought it was really good that we were able to accomplish that.
Excuse me. Was there any discussion on the status of the, what happened to the shelves in the main library here in Nogales at the entrance area? We see it now, it's wide open. And it's missing at least three or four bookshelves that used to be in that area.
Do you want to comment about that, or would it take me to? Well, I asked Juanita about that because she's replacing the physical shelves with newer ones. Now, why are those missing? I guess she just began, decided to eliminate some of the inventory of books?
A few of them, but most of the shelves were donated also.
Yeah.
The shelves themselves were donated to, I think, some went to an institution here in Nogales, Arizona, who ultimately sent them across the border to a library. And some went to the VFW, I don't know where else it was. But they were local.
But it diminished the quantity of books.
It diminished the quantity of books. And if you have any further questions for the librarian, that would be appropriate for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. She told me she wants to replace shelves again in this upcoming budget. But she wants to buy new shelves and get rid of the older shelves, so.
It's just a matter of time.
I guess so.
I just had a quick comment on National Library Week. That falls during National Week of the Young Child as well. So I'd like to, I'll reach out to you and the rest of the staff to see if we can maybe collaborate and do some fun things at the library as well, to kind of do both.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pancho. All right. Item eight on our agenda, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they would like to place on the agenda for the month of March?
Yeah, so we want to talk about acquisitions and weeding after we study what has been submitted.
All right.
And the bylaws.
Okay. The traditional discussion items are the Friends, of course. Maybe the minutes, we're going to catch up in December. All right. And if anybody, anything comes to mind in the next two, three weeks, just email librarian Lopez, please. All right. Our next meeting will be March 12th at 10:00 AM in this venue where we are sitting. Subject to change, but this is what we will wait for. Everybody mark your calendars. And with that, the meeting will be adjourned. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that. Will you adjourn the meeting?
Juanita makes a motion to approve, to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. My Pancho, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. I learned how to run a meeting once.